So as we get started with our first panel, I want to introduce our first moderator, Cecilia Towns. Cecilia is the founder of Gladiators. I first met Cecilia 18 months ago at the Super Bowl in Atlanta. She generously allowed us to come and cover her event that she was doing with a dazzling array of speakers. Cecilia produces first-class events and has set the stage for a strong panel to open the day. Cecilia, thank you for joining us.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Thank you so much, Roy, for bringing us all here together, for, you know, really using your voice and your platform to help bring about change in our society, not just in sports, but in society as a whole. So as Roy said, my name is Cecilia Towns. I'm the founder of Gladiators. We provide content, events, mentorship, what else? Workshops for women in the sports industry. And our goal is really to make the sports industry more accessible to women and create a community of supportive women within the sports industry. As Roy mentioned, we have an amazing group of panelists today. And our goal in this first panel is just to really discuss sort of the entry level, the entry level issues. Are we asking the right questions as it relates to combating racism in sports? I'm going to let each of the panelists introduce themselves. But briefly, we have Mr. Robert Anderson, as you can see on your screen, of Win by Design, Dr. Akila Carter-Franique. She is the Executive Director of the Institute for Sports Society and Social Change at San Jose State University, and Bobby Hacker, who is the President of the Sports Lawyers Association. So thank you all for joining us today. I want to start off just, you know, baseline, so everyone knows what you all are bringing to the table, your background, your knowledge. Can you each just introduce yourselves briefly? Tell us, you know, how you got here, what you're doing in the industry, and how specifically your, the organization that you're involved with is bringing equity to the sports industry. So we can start with ladies first, Dr. Carter-Franique. I think I might, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing your name right. It might be Fran-ique. Are any of our other panelists unmuted? Robert or Bobby?
I am.
Either of you. Okay. All right, so Bobby, let, let, we'll let you start then.
All right, hi, I'm Bobby Hacker. I'm the President of the Sports Lawyers Association, which is, I'm in my second year of a two-year term. Professionally, I was at Fox Sports for 18 years in business and field affairs. Last four years, I've run my own shop, still do representing media, working in esports, and a variety of other areas. But with respect to my role as the President of the Sports Lawyers Association, last year, we finally, we've always wanted to be diverse and inclusive, but we realized that maybe our eye wasn't on the ball the way it should be. So last year, we created a standing committee on diversity and inclusion to address issues that we thought were important, not just for our organization, but for the sports industry in general. And the committee is chaired by two, you know, what I would say titans in the sports line industry, which is Nonna Lee, who's the Chief Legal Officer for the Arizona Diamondbacks, and Woody Dixon, General Counsel of the PAC-12 Networks. And I think an interesting jumping off point was when we began, the committee, they reached out to their membership and asked the committee to define diversity and inclusion. And it was a great exercise because you saw a lot of different ideas and the range of what fits into that. And that has informed how we as an organization are moving forward to expand not just, you know, the diversity, but the inclusiveness within not just our board, but the organization as a whole. And although we have kept what I would call a benign public statement policy, shortly after the recent events of Minneapolis, we issued a statement on our values and our organization, and it was met with incredible positive support. And so we as an organization realized that not only within our board, but the world in which we live, the athletes we represent, the organizations with whom we work, that it was important for us as leaders in the sports industry, sports law industry, it was important for us to make a statement in favor of, you know, more education, more awareness, and furthering our message of diversity and inclusion.
Thank you, Bobby. I think you bring up a really great point, which is, you know, a lot of organizations sort of forget about the inclusion part, right? So diversity is bringing people in who come from different backgrounds, but inclusion is kind of making them feel comfortable once they're there. And I think a lot of organizations struggle with that part. As you see, you know, a lot of companies have high attrition when it comes to keeping women, keeping people of color, keeping, you know, differently-bodied and differently-able people. Can you hear, can you guys hear me?
Coming in and out.
Yeah, we can hear now, yep.
Okay, all right. Robert, can you please introduce yourself and let our audience know what your organization is doing in regards to equity in sports?
Yeah, I'm Robert Anderson, creator and founder of Win by Design. I spent the first half of my life as a classroom teacher. Spent 15 years in the classroom. During my time as a classroom teacher, I created and founded a personal training program. And that personal training program led me to having the opportunity to train professional lacrosse players. So for more than a decade, I've served in that right of training the finest lacrosse players around the country. And in addition to that, coaching in New York State. I became New York State Coach of the Year and an award-winning personal trainer. And that led me to really want to have a bigger and more impactful mission. So I left teaching and founded Win by Design in the hopes of bringing to light something that the world and quite frankly, the nation at this point knows, is that we can have more of an impact through sport. And Win by Design creates curriculum, a specific curriculum, for schools and executive teams. And we, and I work as a consultant to help schools and teams overcome adversity. And now, this is, this is an incredible time of adversity, and it's certainly an incredible time to continue an ongoing conversation in a national light. So what we've been able to do as an organization over the years is offer lacrosse camps, lacrosse clinics, and mentoring programs. And I'm super proud of the things that we've been able to do within our community, along our camp and clinic and mentorship program. Now, our shift has really moved towards how we're impacting schools. And my work as a consultant is moving into school districts and creating curriculum for white, brown, and black students to have conversations about race, but also identify what racism is, and creating curriculum for our teachers to have conversations about race, to have conversations about racism, and recognize how race and racism is impacting not just our black and brown students, but it's impacting our black, brown, and white students around the nation as far as inequity is concerned. And we're creating curriculum to have those conversations, and that's, that is something that we're, that we're proud of. And a number of school districts are, have really taken heed to that, and they recognize the fact that they need, they need leadership in that position, need leadership to be able to understand why racism is everybody's problem and how we have to start changing and more importantly, continuing the conversation, as Roy had mentioned earlier.
Yeah, I think that's a really great point about what is racism? What is race? Because I think sometimes people, we have these initial conversations and we don't know that people constitute racism, right?
I'm sorry, you just broke up a bit. Would you mind just repeating that?
Oh, I was just saying that I think it's amazing that you guys are starting from that baseline level of what is racism. I think because every, you could ask a room of 10, 15 people, and everybody have a different definition of what constitutes racism. So I definitely want to touch on that. I want Dr. Carter, is it Dr. Carter-Franique?
Fran-ique, yes.
Fran-ique, okay. Well, I'll let you introduce yourself, and then I want to get back to that earlier point.
Thank you. Yes, my name's Dr. Akila Carter-Franique, currently serving as the Executive Director for the Institute for the Study of Sports Society and Social Change at San Jose State University. For me, I think a lot of my entree into this work started when I was little. And not to be really long, but I was born and raised in Topeka, Kansas, to parents that were K-12 educators and actually were brought into the city of Topeka to help further the dismantling of racism when we talk about Brown v. Board of Education. So I grew up in that space and place. Over time, got involved in athletics and sport. Later went to compete at the University of Houston in track and field. And then upon graduation, moved, I was in Rockford, Illinois, that's where I finished up high school. But was in a situation where I was working in K-12 and saw a lot of inequities that were taking place. And just through that dialogue and through that opportunity, realized that I needed to go back to school. So in order to go back to school, to get an education enough to be in a position where I could make some change. And so went ahead and pursued my masters and eventually my doctorate. Didn't go back into K-12, actually stayed in higher ed and worked in the realm of sport and sport management after I obtained my degree in sports sociology. And so I really focused my work on really looking at issues of marginalization, obviously equity, diversity, and this notion of inclusive excellence when we talk about our particular workplaces and what we look for for our students. And through all of that, and eventually brought me to the space I am now here at San Jose State University, where our focus of the institute is really to focus on dismantling and really revealing issues of promoting, or I should say promoting social justice, promoting social change, promoting this notion of equity through our three pillars of research, of education, and with our programming, really bringing these issues to light in hopes that we really live out our motto of words to action. So bringing these issues to light, having these conversations as we started in the COVID transition, if you will, promoting our sport conversations for change, where we bring different issues such as gender equity issues, where we talk about issues of race, issues of our HBCUs and the experiences that they've had. And then obviously, in this space and time right now, talking about again, those issues of race relations, marginalization, police brutality. And so we have gone out and spoken with, with young people about the importance of social justice and social change, really delineating not only between what diversity and equity are, but what advocacy and activism are. We've talked to other organizations that are non-sport and talking about this notion of diversity and inclusion and using sport as an example of how change can be made within this safe, within this safe space in some instances, but a space that often mimics our societal realities.
Thank you. Yeah, you touched on a bunch that I want to come back to for sure. But I think one of the things that I heard echo in your intro and in Robert's are, you know, the need to get to these baseline understandings of things like race, racism, advocacy, activism. So, and anybody can speak to this, but you know, what's your take on what constitutes, what is racism?
Well, that's, that's the $64 billion question. I think that we, it's less of a struggle with what racism is than how to resolve it. Because I can't accept the fact that people willingly accept it as the reality of our day-to-day. So the real question to my mind's eye is, when you lessen a person's value based upon their race, how do we as a society shift that paradigm to move towards a more, hopefully, colorblind reality? You know, it's been going on since 1863, and we haven't made a ton of progress. And there's been a lot of commentary. And if you look at the history of our country, there are these moments where the pot boils over and people say, oh, we have an issue. But, and you have presidential commission after presidential commission after presidential commission. And yet, we happen as a society, made that next step. So I think really the issue is looking at it as how it negatively impacts society and trying to take all of those triggering mechanisms and wipe them from our national lexicon.
And, you know, the way I think of race, race is that social hierarchical construction. Looking at this notion of even racism is sort of that act, okay? The action of prejudice and discrimination. And it's often used to justify marginalized treatment of racial groups. So blacks, as we have in this particular conversation today, but not only blacks, but Hispanics, Latinos, Asians, Native people by majority groups. And, you know, using this, this categorization to justify again, the treatment taking place not only in the US, but also globally, when we talk about South Africa and Australia. And respectively, even to Bobby's point, not moving to a space of this colorblind notion, because that's been sort of a mantra over the past, you know, decade even. But getting to a place where we recognize and acknowledge that, yes, you are different, but you bring something to the table. We need to highlight that, celebrate that, and make sure each and every one values the history and culture that they bring with them.
Racism is, at its simplest form, is the act of suppression. And any act of suppression should be met with an identification. Recognizing that racism is a young man or young woman stepping off of an elevator because you believe someone is going to do something, or you're in danger because someone is black, calling the police because you're standing outside a Starbucks on a phone call, but you look intimidating, and the police need to investigate why you're on, why you're on the phone. That's an act of racism. Suppression of folks being in jail. And why does it matter? Why does it matter? Times more blacks are imprisoned over whites. Why does that matter? That's racism, and why does it matter? And I, I believe, to your point, that we all have a working, working definition of racism, and it is important to identify it at its core just so we all can be on the same page and know that it isn't one act. And then the next step is, why does that matter? Why does it matter that a young man or young woman would get off of an elevator because a black man would step on? Or you would get that phone call? Why does that matter that five times more blacks are in prison than whites? And the reason why it matters is because it creates, it creates a divide. And it creates a divide amongst the families, amongst black families, and certainly black men and black women. And it creates divide and an opportunity to unite white families with black families and be able to recognize that we're here and we're all, and we're human. And that's part of the reason why it matters. And part of the reason why it also matters is that racism is an act of seeing someone of less than who you are as a person. And that was brought to the light and is now exploded worldwide. What happens when you're seen as less than a human or less than a man? You'll still end up with your, with someone's knee on your throat. So we, so we recognize, so it's certainly important to recognize what it is, and that is the foundation of what we do. And then the next question is, why it matters? Because believe it or not, unfortunately, some people still question, well, yeah, it's here, but what's the difference? But it matters.
Yeah.
It matters.
Yeah, so it sounds like there is an echo of, you know, racism including prejudice and power, right? Because we all, you know, can be guilty of having, sorry, I got police sirens, but we can all be sort of guilty of having these underlying prejudices based on, you know, how we were socialized. But then to actually be able to act on those or to have the power to influence the way someone else lives, what you were speaking of, of suppression, you know, then that's where you, you reach the level of racism. Seems like there's a combination of sentiments and then power. So I want to hear from each of you, why do you think that these movements that we've seen throughout time in American culture specifically, these movements against racism, against social justice, why they've been tied to sports? It seems like if you look, I actually have a picture of Muhammad Ali behind me right now. And so it's like throughout our history, our athletes are being very closely linked to moves for, for social justice. Why do you think that is?
You know, I think the seminal event was the 1968 Olympic boycott led by Dr. Harry Edwards and others. And I think it was the first time that you had had movements and we were in the sort of the civil rights era and these athletes who had, you had increasing African-American athletes participating in American sport. And they wanted to have a voice, and they raised their voice. And it was the first time that that, that actually happened. And if, for those of you that were around, you may recall, it was met with some incredible anger. Like it was a how dare they moment. But they, you know, I think started a very important time. Now, did that trend from '68, just the calculus keep going upwards? No. But I think since then, you've had from time to time, athletes speak up in whatever way, whether it was Kurt Flood talking about, you know, the, the lack of free agency in baseball. And there were moments, and there were, you know, one player might stand up and say something. But you started to see a sea change after Ferguson with NBA players addressing it publicly. And obviously, the Colin Kaepernick situation, where he did the ultimate peaceful protest and people lost their minds. But he didn't lose his focus. He hasn't lost his focus. And I think we are seeing that change moving forward, where athletes realize, we have a tremendous platform and we have First Amendment rights like everyone in this country. It's time to exercise them. Now, again, does this continue? And are people going to continue knocking on the door? I think, I think we're at a place maybe where it's finally going to happen. And it's not going to be, you know, one of these historic blips that we've had about athletes speaking up about racism. I think, to quote the movie Network, they're mad as hell and not going to take it anymore. And I think we're finally reaching that point. I'm hopeful we are at any event.
You know, I see it, again, of you race more as a sort of overarching or interplay between sport, race, and politics. Thus again, as we know, sport is a microcosm of society. It's universal, I feel. It's relatable. I think it's palatable. Sport was and is entertainment and an opportunity to showcase one's athletic talent, command the stage. But for black and white people, it's been sort of an understood space in which blacks can really thrive. And this imagined space has served as an entree in many respects and to being fully realized in white America. One iconic figure that sort of commanded the stage dates back to even 1908, when we think about Jack Johnson's defeat of Tommy Burns. He used this stage and this platform, and that's one where whites began to sort of, you know, lift up and realize, oh, you know, this is, this is a space that, that there's some dominance going on and a juxtaposition to what we've espoused about the inferiority of black people. So space in which white America can see the potentiality of black people, not as less than, but even as formidable, being that they challenge this white ideological knowledge of inferiority. Sport is this terrain with regard to black of portraying, yet reflecting sort of seen contradictory notions. Again, physical superiority, but juxtaposition that to intellectual inferiority. They're gentle, yet menacing. So these contradictions sort of created a space where black, the black athlete was a political entity. And using the work of Ben Carrington in his book on race, sport, politics, the black sporting diaspora, he states that it's a global sporting project in which race or racial categorization, if you will, is constantly contested. And racism, as I see, is manifested in and beyond the sporting context. So we're seeing these individuals battle it out or use this space in the sport world. But it's also sort of a competing against the other ideologies when we talk about politics, when we talk about education. So in much of the time now, you know, we're dealing with George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor. But before them, you know, we have an Emmett Till. We have Edmund Teddiss Bridge in Bloody Sunday. We have 1963, the murder of the four little girls, Addie Mae Collins, Carol Denise McNair, Cynthia Wellesley, Carol Robertson. And these issues don't happen in a bubble. So when we think about the stance of Tommy Smith and John Carlos and what they did, they weren't just standing for themselves. They weren't standing just in, in an isolated space talking about race and racial injustice in the sport world. They were speaking to the larger context of the challenges that were happening throughout time. They were speaking in a space where they had a voice. But because of that too, they also got shut down. And so there's been many pioneers before and after, you know, Tommy Smith and John Carlos. When we talk about Jesse Owens from 1936, when we think of, you know, of course, Tommy Smith and John Carlos, and as Bobby talked about Kurt Flood, Mahmoud Badoul Rauf and what he's done, Colin Kaepernick today. But also, there's been women that I also really want to highlight that have done some great things and, and using this space as a political terrain, as a social justice terrain. When we think about Aresina Robinson, Earlene Brown, Wilma Rudolph and the Tennessee Tiger Bells that have also used their platform and used their space to stand up and speak out with regard to social injustices that are happening.
When you, when you think about athletes, the first thing that we think about is how they leave us in awe. If you love football, you remember when Odell Beckham made his one-handed catch on a Sunday night against the Cowboys. If you're a lacrosse fan, you remember the U-19 team coming back from behind and Austin Sims on the cover of US Lacrosse. And it was just historic. If you love gymnastics, you love watching Caitlin, and you saw what she did in walking away from the Olympics to go to UCLA. And then just her floor routines are just dynamic. Athletes leave us in awe. Athletes leave us in awe. You could watch basketball games and, and, and just stand that excitement when you see Giannis coming down the corridor, Jordan jumping from the free throw line. Those, those times are just embedded in our spirit. Athletes leave us in awe. Athletes also leave us in awe when they share what they think and what they experience and what they feel and how they want to see change. And the reality is, we've gone so long with seeing our athletes in, in high school to college and moving into the professional ranks. We've seen them on the court, but we haven't actually heard their thoughts. We haven't actually heard their stories. We haven't, we, we, we haven't known the other side of what it took to get to where they are. So then all of a sudden, when they start to share it, we're, we're in shock. We're in awe. This, these are brand new thoughts. They're just, they're just expressing it quite possibly for the first time. And when they do, we carry that awe of their athleticism with us onto the stage when they speak or when they march or when they take a knee. And we question why, that all of a sudden they need to stay in their lane or they shouldn't be doing that or go back to what you were doing. But the reality is everyone that marches isn't a professional marcher. They, they have jobs and do other things and quite possibly maybe it isn't on a national stage where you get to see them on Sunday nights or Saturday afternoons. But they're people of professions, just like our athletes. So we need our athletes to speak up because the way that we, we are in awe of them on their field or on their mat is the same way that we'll be in awe to hear what they actually have to say and what they think. And we see it with, we see what happens when athletes speak up during, I don't even want to say it's the height. But during the initial murder of Mr. Floyd, we heard the CrossFit community stand up and we heard them talk and the athletes spoke. And it brought to light that the CrossFit community has some challenging people in leadership positions and it led to the retirement, or I should say, Greg Glassman, the leader, made some challenging comments, inappropriate, hurtful. And ultimately the CEO and founder took an early retirement. And now that culture is being changed. So we need to hear from our athletes because it's also bringing about, it's bringing the light. Maybe some folks that are in leadership that don't share the same view of things that we're so impassioned about. Nick Saban stood with his athletes. I, I believe, I've never met Mr. Saban or Coach Saban, the head coach at Alabama football team. My thought would be that he would support all of his players. I would think that he did. But to think it, but to hear him say with his players that not just all lives matter, but all lives can't matter until black lives matter and stood with his players and voiced his, voiced his, his spirit and his heart led to the mayor making some extremely challenging remarks, not just about the Alabama football team, but about the state itself and led to his retirement. He resigned from this position. So we need our athletes to speak. We need our athletes to stand up because they have a story to tell. And the same way that they can leave us in awe on the court, on the field and on the grass is the same way that they can leave us in awe with their, with their words and with their position against race and their vision for maybe somebody that's behind them coming up that doesn't have to go through the same trials that they did. And it also leads to the people in positions of power when our athletes speak up to identify who they really are. And we saw that within the CrossFit community. We saw that with the Alabama football team. And now we're continuing to see it within the NFL. We're now, they're showing support for Colin Kaepernick. We need our.
Well, it looks like we're over our time, but we're actually seem to just be getting started. So I don't know where you want to go. Do you want to?
Let's keep going for, yeah, let's keep going for a few more minutes. I think you guys are really getting into some important issues here and I'd love to have that conversation continue.
All right, I think that's a great idea. So, you know, one of the things that I think everyone has touched on is how pivotal the athlete, his or herself has been to these social justice movements, right? Like that it really starts with the athlete. What role do you think that the teams, the brands, the unions should be playing? You know, should they be siding with the athletes? Should they be, take more of a backseat, be giving, giving direction to the athletes? What do you think about their role in all, in all of it?
Well, you know, simply stated, whether it's a team or the league organization or whatever umbrella is over the, where the athletes are participating, they simply need to do the right thing and the right thing is to address the issue head on and not pretend that it isn't an issue. And I think that although they're late to the party, you know, the NFL sort of making a statement was a big move. Now, I don't know what it's going to mean or what it's going to happen, but you know, every journey has to begin with one step. And I think that acknowledging an issue is a good start. The question is, and if you look through history, the bigger question is, it's great that you acknowledge the issue, but are you going to keep your eye on the prize? So are you going to continue to foster the kind of change that will address these, you know, institutionalized issues of racism across our society? So it's a good step that there's awareness at the league, team, et cetera level. But I think the athletes and the fans have to keep reminding those various organizations that until we make some progress, it's an issue that needs to be front and center. And I don't know how that's going to shake out. There's been some positives over the last couple of months. But again, if you look at history, these sort of blips of awareness are never enough. And one would hope that we finally reached that point where we're able to actually begin to affect change and to make some hard choices and hard decisions. I think, I mean, my gut is telling me that our country, notwithstanding some voices to the contrary, is ready for this to happen. But I think not just the teams, not just the leagues, not just the players associations, but all of us that work in the sports industry have to always keep an awareness that these are issues that if this is the area in which we work, we want it to be a more perfect world. And to that end, we, we all have the obligation to not lose sight of the issue and keep pushing forward for change.
You know, I see it as the teams, brands, unions, they, they need to support their athletes. They needed to demonstrate support for, you know, number one, what is right from a race equity, a gender equity, when we talk about pay or the Flint water crisis or mental health. Number two, they need to recognize and understand, you know, their athletes, they're members or representatives of these communities. So these issues are affecting these athletes firsthand. Whether you are a black male, a black female, like I said, I just spoke of the Flint water crisis. When we talk about, you know, issues of social inequality, they've got to realize that their, their labor, if you will, those athletes are coming from these communities. Their fans in which they're trying to attract or wanting to entertain, if you will, are coming from these communities. So sport has an opportunity and a platform to, to get on board and, and again, as Bobby said, you know, do what's right and speak to that. And I think athletes are also realizing that they have power. Again, I work in institution of higher education. Our students are who we work for. Our students have that power. And I think we saw that in the very case of most recently from the US Women's Softball Team, in which a tweet was sent out by their GM using them as this racist propaganda for Trump and the team quit. The team quit. So there's no more team. So I think we have to be mindful of our community, be mindful of our athletes, where they come from and the sport industry has to begin to understand and recognize that it plays a role in perpetuating or even remedying this culture of racism.
I'm so proud of what I've seen in, within the lacrosse community for decades. First stick programs that are going to inner city and, and I'd say underexposed areas and providing sticks and equipment to groups, clinics that are being offered throughout the United States in inner cities and certainly in towns and areas where there are youth lacrosse programs. And having fundraisers consistently every single year that help raise money, awareness for schools in Brooklyn, for teams in Brooklyn and in the Bronx. And friends of mine in my training program are at the forefront of so many of those things and they're wildly passionate about giving back and committing and giving. And those things need to continue to happen. So I would say that our brands, far as within the game of lacrosse, recognize that it has a role to play. The next step in change is not just to give your dollars, but to, but to attack a cause. And the cause that I would like to see professional sports, to use your word, Doc, which was labor, to see the professional sport athletes, the labor that's going, that, that being produced on the field is to, is to choose one topic that they are going to change. And that would be single parenthood, single family households. Truly wanted to make it, to make a change. There are a lot of things that we're already doing right. If they wanted to do, if they wanted to do more, make a decision that we're going to go back into the communities that our athletes, professional athletes are coming from and have conversations and take action to change how single family households are raising our black athletes, male and female. Because single family households, black, single family households are a fracture in our system. It's destroying our families and it isn't allowing our black athletes, men and women, to recognize that sport isn't the only way out. And if professional brands have a true desire to change the conversation of racism, to go back into those families, go back into those cities, supply academic and educational materials, not just handouts, but tools to teach why it's important to keep families together. Why didn't you give this to the family is the reason why athletes beyond, I should say, athletes get out of impoverished areas and why athletes beyond the sport stay together once they're finished playing the sport is because of the families. So that would be the one single change that I would like, that I would, that I would love to see brands take on if they felt as though that they wanted to really make change and ultimately change the conversation that's happening with our labor that's on the field. Because that labor needs a family and the, and the folks that are watching them, the young kids that are watching them, need a mother and a father at home to teach them and to educate them and to empower them beyond their athletic ability.